There we go. Hi, everybody. Thank you for joining us for the Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting on Wednesday, May 17th. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, item number one. Commissioner Munoz, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Moving on to item number two, roll call. Michelle, please.
J.D. Draculich.
Here.
Harris Armstrong.
Present.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Mark Johnson is absent. Arthur Munoz.
Here.
And Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
Oh, and Alex Veltou, absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do we have any requests to speak forms?
It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Did we? No public comment was received.
No voicemails were received.
And no requests to speak forms either.
Thank you very much.
And there's nobody on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom. Thank you. Does anybody in the chambers wish to speak in general public comment? Seeing none, we will close item three, public comment, move to item number four, approval of minutes. Item 4.1, Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of April 5th. Okay. We'll entertain discussion about the minutes or a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the minutes from April 4th or 5th. Motion to approve the minutes from April 5th.
All right, we have a motion.
Commissioner Munoz will second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Minutes approved. Moving on to item 4.2, Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of April 19th minutes.
Commissioner Villanueva, I have to abstain. I was not present.
Thank you. Looking for a motion of approval of minutes from April 19th?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes for April 19th.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there a quorum?
Do we have a quorum with four on that? I think we do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Figured we did.
I'm bad at math.
That's okay. All right, those minutes from April 19th are approved. Closing item number four, moving on to item number five. We do have a presentation by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority on the Source Water Protection Program. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Kara Steele from Truckee Meadows Water Authority for the record. So I'm just here to provide a brief presentation on our Source Water Protection Program and Reno's role in that program for the last few years. Nathan asked me to just provide a brief update on the implementation of that. So I just wanted to quickly start out with an overview of why source water protection is important to TMA. As I'm sure all of you know, we serve approximately 440,000 residents in Reno and Sparks and Washoe County. Eighty to eighty-five percent of our drinking water comes from the Truckee River. The other fifteen to twenty percent comes from TMA's 90 production wells. And we rely on a lot of collaborative partnerships because we don't own most of the land around our sources of supply. So we rely on partners to help us protect those sources. So with that in mind, with NDP's support, in 2020, we created this plan with this very long name, but it's an Integrated Source Water and Watershed Management Plan for the Truckee River and public water systems in the Truckee Meadows. So there are other public water systems in the region. They're all very small, so we are the primary one. And that is, that plan is accessible. It's mostly online. It's available at Washoe County CleanWater.org. There's a great mapping tool in there that shows source water protection areas and different project profiles. And again, that was completed in 2020 with a large variety of stakeholders. And one of the key implementation actions that we first sought after completing that plan was to work with City of Reno to update the code. Prior to this update, we didn't really receive any notification if there were businesses with potentially contributing uses, is what we call them, but things that are a potential concern for contamination of groundwater or surface water supplies. We didn't really receive notification unless there were businesses within 150 feet of our wellheads, which is NDP's protocol. And so what we did is we worked with Nathan and others to update that code. And so now what we do is we receive basically a notification from businesses that are a moderate to high risk of contamination. Obviously, some of these are less risky than others, but we did start receiving notifications in 2021 from any businesses in Reno that could have one of these potentially contributing uses. And so for that notification process, we wanted to keep it as easy as possible for City of Reno staff and not increase permit review times or really staff time at all. So what we did is if there's a use, one of those businesses that's under one of those use types, they have to notify TMA. We created like a little registration webpage on our TMA site. And then that business or that applicant would receive an automated email after submission to include with their application packet to City of Reno. And so that's all they have to include with their application. And then on our end, we do the work of reviewing to determine if the business is a potential concern from a source water protection standpoint. And so I'm going to talk about, a little bit more about what that actually means. So this schematic is, sorry, it's kind of hard to read, but this is a schematic. And if you go to that website, Washoe County CleanWater.org, you can actually see all of the source water protection areas for the region. And so the purple area is a larger, broader source water protection area. That helps us potentially protect any sources that we might create in the future if we're going to drill new wells, basically, or look at new tributaries for a source of supply. And then the more specific areas that we're concerned about are these critical source water protection areas. So those green and orange blobs, those are representing our wellhead capture zones. So at the center, the orange blob would be a wellhead, and then basically the travel times there are the capture zones. So if a contaminant was to spill in that 20-year capture zone, it would take basically 20 years for that contaminant to seep through groundwater and into our drinking water supply. So that's why those are critical source water protection areas. And the same for the river. We did a 300-foot buffer on the river and 150-foot on the tributaries. And this is all basically upstream of our Glendale Water Treatment Plant intakes, and then obviously all of our wells throughout the region. And so what happens is when a business comes in on our side, basically, we have a filter set. So if it's in one of these critical source water protection areas, it gets ranked as a really high rating, and that's what we look at. And then what we can do is we can contact those businesses. So we don't have any regulatory authority, so all we can do is really provide education and outreach. But in 2022, we received notifications from 118 business license submittals just in City of Reno, and those were the ones that were filtered through also the geographic filter. So it's not all of the ones we would have received, but the ones that we're potentially concerned with. And we contacted 37 of those businesses in critical source water protection areas. The graph here just kind of shows you a distribution. Mostly, we saw a lot of like storage, small warehousing. And then we're obviously kind of concerned when we see like auto service and repair. Those are things that we're particularly concerned about, new gas stations, cleaner, commercial cleaners. And here you can kind of see the distribution of all of them are received. Again, there's the ranking. So our GIS staff did an amazing job of creating this system where we can just see a ranking and which ones we're most concerned about. And so these were the businesses we actually contacted. For the most part, that contact just looks like us reaching out with an email, potentially a phone call, letting them know, kind of putting them on notice, you're in a critical source water protection area. This is key for our drinking water supply. You have to follow all state, local, and federal regulations in terms of things like best management practices, secondary containment, chemical storage. So we don't have a lot of, like I said, we have no regulatory authority when it comes to the source water protection piece, but we at least now know where these businesses are located and have provided some education and outreach. There are a few businesses we've reached out to and actually gone on like a site visit and checked in to see, you know, what else we could do to potentially protect source water. And that would be like a business we're extremely concerned about. So in summary, this has just been, as far as we've heard from City of Reno staff, it's been a really easy process. We've had a very few issues with our submittal webpage. It's worked really smoothly on our end as well. And it's been super successful at helping inform TMA about potential issues in our critical source water protection areas. So hopefully helping us prevent future source water contamination. And because of City of Reno's participation in this, and we really appreciate it, we are trying to expand this effort to Sparks and Washoe Counties' review processes because it has been very successful with few hiccups or issues. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Hi. Are those maps available? Because I mean, those are super useful. Where can I get?
Yeah, I'm happy. I don't know if that, I don't think that summary was included in the packet, but I'm happy to distribute that. And then again, if you want to see the larger source water protection areas, those are available online, but I can distribute that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it very much. All right, we will close.
Mr. Chair, can we pause the meeting for just a few minutes? We have code enforcement trying to log in for this item, this next item.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
[inaudible]
Yes, I can. Thank you so much.
public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. We will now open up item number 6.1 with a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you, Vice Chair Draculich. Commissioners John Krompotic with KLS Planning, representing the applicant and owner in tandem here. Steve Buck is the original developer of the property almost 30 years ago. He's with me this evening. You know, the tenant is Big Horn and the applicant, but Steve has a great knowledge of the history here and might be helpful if you have any questions directed to him. How's that? Is that okay? Can you hear that okay? I just wanted to be fairly close to. Good? Thank you. So this is, of course, a request for an AEC and major site plan review. The real issue, as I state in the summary, is the condition four that was established 28 years ago about landscaping. And that stated, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a final landscape plan and an irrigation plan to the satisfaction of community development staff. And here we are 28 years later with, as you all know, a code violation that evolved to this applicant, these two applications. Wanted to show about the landscaping, there is now a covered patio, of which I'll get to. But what's interesting and important to note here is that that was the landscaping, the extent of landscaping on the applicant's side of the wall prior to getting the legal permitting for the canopy and the establishment of the patio as we know it today. So you see just a little bit of a cover there, and then some shrubs that were established prior to the full condition we have today. Current patio conditions, there's the wall, Big Horn, covered patio, heaters, picnic tables, and so on. A lot of seating. Just give you a little more exposure to those. That's looking at from a different perspective. On the right, you would see those are the TVs that have been established, part of a condition of approval, as we have agreed to with staff. And then in the foreground of the current, of the photo to the left, is the kind of recreation and cornhole area. Looking across over the wall, you see the two single-family residences. What we're really trying to show here is there's about a five-foot vertical elevation change that works in favor of the situation that we have. So one looking toward Big Horn on the left, and then looking the opposite way at the house from the patio. Our better, our solution to make it better, the reason we can say that is because we're dealing specifically with noise abatement and with better screeding in the proposed set of design criteria. So there's a concept of the hedge, of which we're putting on top, excuse me, in front of the wall with a narrow planter area. The idea is to have a solid screen that would go two to three feet above the wall. And then you would see the acoustical panels, as suggested by the acoustic study. Luke Sax will be in his recommendation for the noise mitigation part of this. In plan view, so you can see the patio fairly well amenitized. We have the existing landscape in that area that is a break in the hedge, and then all the different elements, a firepit seating area, horseshoes, existing landscape, a little bar area, and a patio of which would be the smoking area to the right and adjacent to the building there. West side, so that is, as you're standing out, that northwest corner. We did get permission, as noted in your staff report, from the adjacent property owner to allow us to plant trees on that side. So you can see in that 27-foot area, we have several different varieties of juniper trees. The idea is it sits about four feet higher, would be a lot more impactful at time of planting. And a little more of a solid screen was the intent there. I think it works best for both properties in working through that. Line of sight, different perspective on how we can see that drop down, that sitting from the patio. Elevation that it is today, somebody imagine sitting at a dining room table or a picnic table out there, looking toward the site. You can see line of sight projects right over the top of the hedge. That was the idea there. So that was somehow influenced the hedge planting and the hedge design as we have proposed. This one's got a lot going on. This is the view of the wall from the residence, but you can see we have the lowering of the speakers, the projection of where the hedge is going to be, the top of the building. And the idea is that everything that needs to be screened is screened in that image. There are some existing mature trees that serve a lot of purpose as well, as far as visual screening goes. But of course, those are all deciduous trees and just effective during, well, now this time of year, in plant season and growing Average wall height, you also see that, and I'm sure you'll hear from staff, but we, it does stagger because we got elevation dropping one way, another way, and then steps in the wall. So it varies from five and a half to, I think, about seven feet. There is the standards that we have proposed and agreed to and working through this with staff in very quick summary fashion. The noise attenuation is to lower the speakers so they're no more than six feet above the floor. Install the acoustical panels, first time. And in many years of doing this, that I've seen that, I thought it was a brilliant solution. I'm completely confident in spending time with this expert that we're doing the right thing and establishing the most proactive noise mitigation solution that we can. Looking across over the wall, you see the two single-family residences. What we're really trying to show here is there's about a five-foot vertical elevation change that works in favor of the situation that we have. So one looking toward Big Horn on the left and then looking the opposite way at the house from the patio. Our better, our solution to make it better, the reason we can say that is because we're dealing specifically with noise abatement and with better screening in the proposed set of design criteria. So there's a concept of the hedge of which we're putting on top, excuse me, in front of the wall with a narrow planter area. The idea is to have a solid screen that would go two to three feet above the wall. And then you would see the acoustical panels as suggested by the acoustic study. Luke Sax will be in his recommendation for the noise mitigation part of this. In plan view, so you can see the patio fairly well amenitized. We have the existing landscape in that area that is a break in the hedge and then all the different elements, a fire pit seating area, horseshoes, existing landscape, a little bar area, and a patio of which would be the smoking area to the right and adjacent to the building there. West side, so that is, as you're standing out, that northwest corner. We did get permission, as noted in your staff report, from the adjacent property owner to allow us to plant trees on that side. So you can see in that 27-foot area, we have several different varieties of juniper trees. The idea is it sits about four feet higher would be a lot more impactful at time of planting and a little more of a solid screen was the intent there. I think it works best for both properties in working through that. Line of sight, different perspective on how we can see that dropdown, that sitting from the patio elevation that is today. Somebody imagine sitting at a dining room table or a picnic table out there, looking toward the site, and you can see line of sight projects right over the top of the hedge. That was the idea there. So that was somehow influenced the hedge planting and the hedge design as we have proposed. This one's got a lot going on. This is the view of the wall from the residence, but you can see we have the lowering of the speakers, the projection of where the hedge is going to be, the top of the building. And the idea is that everything that needs to be screened is screened in that image. There are some existing mature trees that serve a lot of purpose as well, as far as visual screening goes. But of course, those are all deciduous trees and just effective during, well, now this time of year, in plant season and growing season. Average wall height, you also see that, and I'm sure you'll hear from staff, but we, it does stagger because we got elevation dropping one way, another way, and then steps in the wall. So it varies from five and a half to, I think, about seven feet. There is the standards that we have proposed and agreed to and working through this with staff in very quick summary fashion. The noise attenuation is to lower the speakers so they're no more than six feet above the floor. Install the acoustical panels first time. And in many years of doing this that I've seen that, I thought it was a brilliant solution. I'm completely confident in spending time with this expert that we're doing the right thing and establishing the most proactive noise mitigation solution that we can. And then those fiber boards underneath the patio is number three. The visual screen, keeping the existing wall, the landscape hedge that I mentioned in number two, limiting onsite activity in the patio from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Number four is closing the windows and the doors on the west and north side of the building at all times, with the exception of allowing the customers and the employees in and out access. And then outdoor daytime entertainment and outdoor live entertainment is prohibited at this site. That's what we've worked through. That's what we've somewhat proposed and then staff has, we've agreed to in this big-picture set of conditions. Again, two separate, entirely separate criteria. One is the attenuation of the noise. The other is the visual screen. And that's all I have. Commissioners, thank you for your time and I would be here for any questions. Thank you. And feel free to engage Mr. Buck if need be.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll take a presentation from the city. Hey, Leah.
All righty. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Leah Brock, Associate Planner with the City of Reno Development Services. And this evening, I am following up on Mr. Kropodik's presentation for Big Horn Tavern, Major Site Plan Review and Alternative Equivalent Compliance. The half-acre site is located just north of the West Seventh, sorry. The half-acre site is located on the north side of West Seventh Street. West of the railies located at the intersection of Seventh Street and Keystone. Here on the map, you can see the railies there. There's a CVS across the street and the old bowling alley down there on the corner. Again, this request is for a major site plan review triggered by residential adjacency and the alternative equivalent compliance for the landscape and screening standards. The subject site is located in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. To the north are single-family residential in SF8 and to the west is multifamily residential in MF30. Key issues on this request were analyzed in this request were the overall site design and compatibility with that adjacent residential. To give you a little bit of background on this project, the site was originally developed as a strip mall in the mid-1990s. At that time, a special use permit was issued for that residential adjacency and as a condition of approval, a landscape screening buffer was required between the commercial and the residential uses. On the screen here, you can see the 1995 landscape plan, which was submitted to the city, showing that the trees had been installed. Staff believes that over the course of the last 30 years, that that has been gradually removed. The restaurant patio was built and expanded without the additional approvals that were required through the city by Reno Municipal Code. In March of 2022, a notice of violation was issued for violating the condition of that 1994 special use permit that required that landscaping. Ever since that time, the applicant has been working with staff to remedy the situation. On October 14th, 2022, a site plan review was approved with a six-month deadline to obtain permits. That site plan review expired just a few weeks ago and the applicant decided to combine the site plan review with the application for the alternative equivalent compliance to be reviewed concurrently before this body. Here you can see the overall site design, which Mr. Kropodik showed you. The outdoor patio is developed with a seating area, fire pits, horseshoe pits, raised planters, a bar area, and a permitted patio cover. There is an existing solid masonry wall along the north property line. And as Mr. Kropodik showed you, there are some elevation differences between that single-family residential to the north and the current patio. Again, there's also elevation differences to the west with that two-story apartment complex being about maybe three or four feet higher than the elevation of this patio. Regarding residential adjacency, you can see that those single-family homes up there to the north and you can see that multifamily two-story apartment complex to the west. Due to the residential adjacency, the expired site plan review, again, that was approved six months ago, included the conditions of approval necessary to make that restaurant patio reasonably compatible with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. Those conditions included limited hours of days in construction, limited hours of outdoor activities, prohibiting outdoor live entertainment, and creating a designated smoking area up against the building and away from the residential. Here you can see the screening. This outlines the request for the alternative equivalent compliance. Basically, on the left there, you have what would be required by Reno Municipal Code and on the right, you have what the applicant is proposing. So rather than doing a six-foot solid wall, five foot of landscaping and a minimum of one evergreen tree per 30 linear feet and shrubs, the applicant has planned this, has proposed this patio planter, which will increase the screening and overall meet the intent of the requirements and provide the screening from those homes. So condition number nine requires that a two-foot tall planter with dense six-foot hedges maintained with a permanent drip irrigation system. To the west, it would require eight feet of landscaping, a three-foot solid wall, and again, a tree per 30 linear feet that achieves a 20-foot height. The applicant has proposed to put those juniper trees. Staff believes that that will suffice. Condition number 10 requires that five juniper trees spaced approximately six to seven feet apart, adjacent to the patio, should fix that issue on that side. I do want to point out that if for any reason that those juniper trees cannot be planted on the adjacent property, or if they are not maintained in perpetuity, they need to be replanted on the applicant's property. And that is part of that condition. Regarding noise and lighting, condition number eight requires that all doors and windows on the north and west side remain closed. The TVs need to be screened from view. Those outdoor speakers are going to be lowered to no higher than six feet. Exterior lights need to go off after closing. Condition number 16 states that they will comply with the conclusions that were outlined in the noise study. And condition number 17 says that those TVs shall not be used unless they are screened. On the board are the Major Site Plan Review recommended findings. During the analysis, staff was able to determine that the outdoor patio is compatible with the surrounding uses with the appropriate screening and noise reduction measures. The outdoor patio with the alternative equivalent compliance is consistent with the intent of those development standards. Here are the alternative equivalent compliance recommended findings. Again, staff's analysis found that the proposed screening standards do exceed the standards, the intent of the standards, and it exceeds the goal of buffering between uses. And it also benefits the community because the applicant can keep the patio and now it will be screened from the neighbors. We have found, too, that there will be less impact with the proposed alternative equivalent compliance than what would be without it or if it were to meet the requirements of RMC. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve the Major Site Plan Review and the request for the alternative equivalent compliance, subject to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report. The recommended motion is on the board for your review. If you have any questions, I am available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leah. Appreciate it. We will now go to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, if you want to kick us off. Thanks.
Commissioner Villanueva, I read one email. I believe that's all we had and then whatever was in the packet. And I also visit that Big Horn pretty regularly. Thank you.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Manias, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Gower, reviewed correspondence and am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Veltou?
Commissioner Veltou, reviewed correspondence, frequent Big Horn Tavern, Tavern pretty often.
Commissioner Draculich, I read and received emails and familiar with the site. All right, thank you, guys. We will now move into public comment. It looks like we do have a request to speak form from Monica Magert. Please come on up to the podium and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Monica. I'm leaving that behind the Big Horn since 2000 and since 2020, it's really, really loud. Entertainment, DJ, scream, feels like kids screaming in my backyard, drunk people screaming, drinking, eating, and it's just very loud. That's only what I want to tell. It was a big change from 2020. This is what I want to tell. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Any other requests to speak forms or voicemails or Zoom calls?
There. We received correspondence and it was made, there it is. It was forwarded to the Planning Commission, has been entered as part of the record. There is no request to speak via Zoom and no other request to speak forms and no voicemails.
Thank you. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to the commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Couple of questions. John, I'll direct them to you. So first one, clarifying question. Where the patio is, there's no proposed hedge in that space? Am I understanding that right?
Right, there is a wider planter area in there that's already elevated. It's been established. It showed in one of the photos. And that was, that was part of the criteria of which we analyzed with staff and it was concluded that it was adequate. That's the prior condition. Do you see it right there in the photo to the left?
Yeah.
How wide that is? And then it's elevated and the idea is to get screening.
So that, and is that part of the, maybe that's a question for Leah. Is that part of the condition that in that section, it's going to achieve the same vegetation height as the hedge? Would that existing?
That is the idea. Do you have?
Yes, Leah Brock, for the record, we are not requiring that there be landscaping underneath that existing patio.
Why?
I think the initial thought on the site plan review was that we have those wood planks there for screening and that, and that it just wouldn't grow because the patio goes all the way to the property line.
Well, so what they have there, what John just pointed out with the existing vegetation, it looks like it's, you know, proposed to, it looks like it's going to do okay. Is that something that staff would feel is appropriate to maintain the continuity of that two feet, two foot above the wall vegetation buffer?
Yes. Of course, it is under the purview of this body to implement that. We just took the recommended, or I'm sorry, the conditions of approval from that site plan review from October and transferred them into this, but of course, this body can make changes.
Okay, thank you. The other question, and I don't know, Leah, if you want to answer this or John, I'm just looking for a clarification on the type of the hedge, like with the junipers, you know, that we get that conifer vegetation that provides a year-round buffer. Is the hedge going to be a similar species that'll provide that year-round or is it something that?
I, I forget the species. The idea was a conifer evergreen hedge screening 20, you know, there's of course some characteristics of growth to get the cover densely planted at time of planting, evolves over time, and that's full-time screen. That's, that's the idea.
John, would you be comfortable with just clarifying that in the conditions, the fact that it'd be a species that would provide year-round buffering?
That's, that's fine, yes.
And similar?
We can add that amended condition.
And I'm just, obviously up to the rest of the commissioners. I'm just asking you. And then similarly with the center area there with the vegetation, to the previous question, would you be comfortable with that as a clarification in the condition that vegetation in that section would reach the two-foot height as well?
Over what period of time?
At maturity.
That's fine, at maturity, that's fair, right? So that because they have invested a lot in that planter area, it's irrigated, it's very nice to the eye. It was not intended for dense screen at time of planting, but we can work on that and get there at time of maturity with the influence of the landscape architect. Fair enough?
I'm okay with that.
I'm here to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva.
Leah, question for you. So I'm still learning the whole alternative equivalent compliance. Where do I find that definition or where do I find that in the development code? Or is it not in the development code? And where did that come from? Because I know it's come up a lot of times and I just need to be refreshed.
Is it section eight of Title 18?
Eight, you said?
I think it's, it's in section eight of Title 18 and then it's under, here, hold on, I can tell you. Sorry.
Unless it's in the, I didn't find it in.
It should be at the back of the staff report.
Okay, that's what I was looking for and I couldn't find it.
Right above the conditions of approval, I think, are the legal requirements, if I put them in there.
And I know you've, you had that.
Yeah, so under the legal requirements, right up under the findings, RMC 1808803 is alternative equivalent compliance. That outlines the definition, the process, and the findings.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, where is that?
It's on page eight of the staff report at the very top.
Okay. So I see the general review. Oh, I see, okay, excuse me, okay. I see it, okay, great, thank you. Okay, pauses, no green, right? Okay. No questions right now. I will, I will have questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Leah, a quick question for you. You said that code compliance brought up the issues in 2022. Do we know exactly how that was brought about or why it was brought about?
I have a general idea, but I believe we have code enforcement on the line. Who can speak to that?
Good. Could we, could we get them online now?
Can you, can you hear us? Kenya, are you there? You need to unmute.
Oh, there we go.
Kenya?
Yep.
Okay.
Did, did you hear the question?
I did. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Kenya Palacios. I am with the City of Reno Code Enforcement. And that was based on a complaint.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Veltou, do you have anything you wanted to speak on? Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I think my questions are probably for, for John.
Hello, Commissioner Veltou.
Hi, John, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. I have a couple of questions. I just want to understand. Good, thank you. I, I have a couple of questions. I just want to understand, so the back patio area.
Yeah.
Is the back patio area currently in use?
Yes, it is.
So help me understand, because I'm reading through the packet and I think I might have, it was kind of cutting out a little bit on the presentation during your presentation. What, what exactly is the change in the allowed use under the, sorry, one second. Under the major site plan review, what, what is the change that's being asked for?
The, okay, it was really not a change, it was, it was operating as it is today, but it needed to be, this is my understanding, I, I would appreciate staff confirming what I'm saying, to establish the outdoor patio operation.
Okay, so the, the operations that were in the, on the patio have previously been not allowed and this is to make it allowed?
I, I, I don't know that it wasn't allowed, I know that the, the violation that introduced all of this in this process then said, hey, to legally establish this, you guys need a major site plan review.
I, so I, that, that part's important to me because I, if they weren't allowed to do it and now they're, and they've been acting out of conformance and now they're coming to ask for site plan review to allow the non-conforming activities to occur, how do I evaluate some of these findings? And the finding that I'm concerned about is the parking finding, only because I know that parking lot is a, is a mess sometimes and very difficult to get in and out of. I know we have an exhibit in the packet that shows all the spaces, but like four or five of those spaces are marked off by like a liquor store or tobacco shop. And so I, I guess I'm concerned that by allowing this, if it's not currently allowed, it will significantly contribute to traffic and I, I guess I want to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, on the parking thing, it's a good point, but just know that we have a recorded easement that has no limitations, no restrictions for all of the parking between the pizza, it's called a Pizza Hut, I believe, and that area where the human being is established, that's all parking that is granted in favor of this shot, this little plaza, this little retail center, including the Bighorn Tavern.
Does that include the spaces right in front of the like tobacco shop?
Yes, all of that. All of those are part of the center. The landlord has designated those, I think just to be gracious because of trying to manage, you know, competing interest in the, in the, in the different tenants and said, hey, you know, somehow they cut that deal to make everybody, make things right, make things copacetic. But the key point is there's probably as many parking spaces between what you think of as in front of Bighorn Tavern and all of that space in, between the, there and the pizza place that are legally established in favor of this operation.
Okay, I, I appreciate it, thank you, John.
Thank you. If I didn't answer the question, I, I'd like to.
No, I, I, I think you, I think you have, maybe if, if staff just might know the answer. I just want to understand, is it, is there an allowed use and this is merely a master plan or this is merely to make it conforming, but it's already allowed? Or is there not an allowed use? That's kind of what I'm confused about.
I can answer that. This is Leah Brock for the record. So it, it is an allowed use, but because it has adjacent residential, that triggers the requirement for the site plan review. So before they expended and had the patio out there, if they would have come in and applied for the site plan review, we would have evaluated the use at that time, we would have evaluated the site and then essentially we probably would have approved it, allowed it with the, with the approved screening. In this particular case, we're just doing the process backward, but it's not a non-conforming use. It is an allowed use to be approved with a site plan review.
Thank you, Leah, and I appreciate that. I think I was using the wrong term, so thank you for clarifying that.
That's okay, thank you.
Commissioner Draghut, Leah, I had a question for you. Some of the thought I had before coming here was the sound and then we heard from a neighbor. So we're lowering the speakers, outdoor speakers shall be directed away from the adjacent. I guess maybe I wasn't totally clear on how we're moving those speakers and then they had a read in there that we're lowering them. Anyway, do we feel like we solved the sound issue? I, I know we're probably not trying to address decibels or anything, but that, that was important to me coming in.
I think the fact that the applicant provided the noise study was really kind of eye-opening for us to see what would be the best buffer of noise in that back area. And staff concurs with the conclusions of that noise study and we feel that as long as those things are implemented, the noise should be reduced. At this particular point, the, it hasn't been implemented yet.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leah, oh, chair.
Commissioner Villanueva, go ahead.
I just didn't want her to run off, thank you. Leah, so kind of touching on Veltto's question, so this is neighborhood commercial and you're telling me that this extension into the patio is permitted so long as we do the major site plan review and all the requirements under site plan review are met. And it seems that, well, are met and one of the big factors in that is the noise. So it seems here that what we're dealing with, the big factor here is the noise issue. And so from reading this packet, it's my understanding that the, can you actually touch a little bit on some of the noise? I know we have the, the planter, but there's some other details here. It looks like some wall, what is this, the perforated metal acoustical panels? What is that? Can you talk to me about that? Is that being installed?
It is going to be installed per the conditions of approval to comply with those noise studies. As for what exactly it is, I'm going to let the applicant explain that.
Okay.
To you, but I do want to point out that in addition to the site plan review requirements, we also have residential adjacency requirements and those residential adjacency requirements are what triggers the screening, the, the, the noise, the lighting, all of those things.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Do you have any more questions for me?
No, I just want to hear more about that, the noise.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Villanueva. Could you pull up my PowerPoint, please? Wanted to point to those panels. So here's what I've learned in spending way more time than I ever thought I would with Luke Saxelby, because he was emphatic and if you look at his sound study conclusions and his recommendation for mitigation here, it was, we intuitively in this profession think of vegetative screening as a noise buffer. And he said there's virtually no impact in the reduction of the noise. So the solution, because of the opportunity we had on the wall, this side of the wall, lined with the acoustical panels to his specification is noted in the study. In addition, all of that area underneath the canopy, which is where most of the people gathering is, obviously, that would be lined with those same acoustical panels. And when you looked at his modeling pre and post, he showed that was much more profound in its mitigation than with any vegetation.
Okay, and?
So completely, just so I'm clear here, because I thought it was really important to say, there's the, the, there's the, there's the solution for screening, right, which was the visual part to a lesser extent and you're right, because the complaint came on behalf of somebody, you know, talking about noise as just did a, a citizen here. And, and then the separate matter was the acoustical panels.
How many neighbors, does the applicant know how many neighbors have raised concern about the noise in the area?
I do not know, I know that I asked for permission, I didn't know how this works, right? So I called on my own volition, I called the code enforcement staff and they said, no, 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 you, you don't, we don't give out. I didn't realize how that works, right? But I'm a guy to call the person and find out exactly, go meet with them and figure it out. I got a letter from the owner of the multifamily in support of the project and actually granted permission for us to screen, put in the evergreen trees as both Leah and I have discussed. Talked to the owners to the north, that's a property management operation and they were not really interested in talking about much, but I never heard from any other owners.
Okay, and how about since the application has come forward, have any, has any, I mean, I know I have the email, I have the one or, it was one or two emails and it said my issues have been addressed.
And that's all I had, I know we had a, you know, really nice neighborhood meeting at the NAB and they seemed to embrace what we were proposing for solution, but I have not heard from one. This has been going back just about a full year now, I haven't heard from one neighbor.
Okay, and then JD, if I have, if I can, I do have one more question for Leah.
Go ahead.
Hi Leah, so the applicant, I know the applicant's not going to know the complaints because obviously makes sense why that would be, but do you, are you allowed to share that information regarding the, the number of complaints that have come forward?
My recollection is two, but code enforcement's on, they'll know.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, thank you. Can I ask code enforcement?
Yes, hi, this is Kenya. I am not aware of any complaints at this time, so I'd have to go back to the office and get back to you on how many complaints there are total.
Okay, so currently with you, you don't know, but there, but you may have that number back at the office.
Commissioner, where the, the inquiries, as far as my record search showed it, but there was one code enforcement complaint registered from an abutting neighbor regarding noise and the visual impact.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Commissioner Veltto, any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Gower, please. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification on the, the noise mitigation. So I just went back and looked at the, the report again and John, you brought it up in the, the last image and the recommendations. So the conditions Leah include the fiberglass panels under the patio, but not along the wall?
It does require them along the wall, I believe that was included in the conclusions from the noise study, which is Exhibit J.
So that's in the, that's what I'm saying, that's in the noise study, but it's not mentioned in the condition?
The condition, I think it's 17, requires that they comply with the conclusions of the noise study. And there's three conclusions there and that includes whatever that, that sound buffering was and it's, that page of the noise study is Exhibit J.
So I'm looking at condition 16, which talks about what is required to be installed and it mentions the, so the outdoor acoustic panel system, that's referring to the system along the walls. Can we just clarify that? And maybe it's clear to everyone else, it wasn't clear to me when I read it. Yeah, I see it in the photos.
So should this application be approved, Exhibit J will become part of that approval letter and that specifies the installation of an outdoor acoustic panel system along the south side of the existing six-foot tall sound wall with a minimum three-foot tall band along the length of the sound wall. The treatment shall be placed as high as practical to the top of the wall and they recommend the use of the Kinetics K&amp;P perforated metal acoustic panels or equivalent exterior panels with a noise reduction coefficient of 0.90 or higher. So rather than, rather than creating that as a condition, I just said they have to comply with these, with these conclusions.
Okay. So my, my, my issue, just so, just so you know, is that 16, condition 16 lists a few things and then it says, as stated in, in Exhibit J, so I guess why don't we just say, implement the recommendations in Exhibit J as the, the condition and not list anything? Because it's confusing that it's not really the same stuff.
Let's agree to that, the applicant agrees to that to make it more, more specific to these three criteria, okay?
I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
Commissioner Gower, I'm in agreement, the way it reads, it feels like it leaves a few things out, so I'm good with that amendment to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was in the same place.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, do we want to move to discussion or potential motion?
Commissioner Villanueva, I'll just add, I'm, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Gower. That, I agree, the language wasn't clear, so I'm happy to include that in a motion, so. But I will wait for discussion to be over.
Commissioner Villanueva, if you're ready to make a motion, I would just ask you to entertain the clarifications and the other conditions and I forget, I can pull up the numbers, but the clarification on the hedge species type to ensure that it's year-round and then the vegetation under the canopy, that it reaches the same height as the hedge at maturity. And I think that's conditions.
How about we let you make that motion?
Okay.
You have the language.
I can do that, unless there's any other discussion.
Commissioner Veltto, last chance.
Well, I'll wait, I'll waive my last chance for discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Give it a shot. In case number LDC 23-00054, Bighorn Tavern Patio AEC based upon compliance with the bookable findings, I move to approve the request for a major site plan review and alternative equivalent compliance subject to the conditions listed in the staff report with clarifications that condition number, conditions number nine, be clarified that the hedges are a type of conifer vegetation that provide year-round screening, that the screening underneath the patio reached the same height as the hedge, so the two-foot above the wall at maturity and then condition 16 be revised to essentially say, within six months of the date of the approval of the letter, the applicant shall obtain approval of required building permits and install the required mitigation measures as outlined in Appendix J of the sound study, something to that effect. And I can make all of the findings based on those amendments.
Okay, we have a motion?
Commissioner Villanueva, with all the recommended amendments, conditional changes, I can make all the findings. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good luck with your project. Thanks for coming in. All right, we are now closing item number six and moving to item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Mr. Chairman, I can chime in and just say that we have a meeting scheduled for next week.
Great, perfect update. Okay, closing item number seven, moving to item number eight, staff announcements. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to give a recap of the May 10th, 2023 City Council meeting. Council did deny the appeal for green acres, storage and the project was approved. Also, the Reno, Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan was approved by the City Council. The Shepherd of the Mountains zoning map amendment was approved for the first reading and the Planning Commission bylaws is adopted by the Planning Commission or approved by the Planning Commission was adopted by council. Items on the next agenda for the June 8th Planning Commission meeting include a variance tentative map for some townhomes, a special planning district zoning map amendment for some senior affordable apartments and a time extension for a tentative map. That's it for staff announcements.
All right, thank you. Closing item eight, moving on to item number nine, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items.
Oh yeah, Mr. Chair, I, quick question, is Mike Michelle? Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, I, quick question, is Mike Michelle on? On Zoom, he's not, okay. Um, I want to bring up to staff and see if we can get some kind of, um, maybe clarification on what the requirements are for, uh, different companies that are doing projects when they re- re-enter asphalt into something they just worked on. Um, I, I thought it'd be a good question for Mike Michelle, and where I'm going with this is, uh, Military Drive is being, uh, taken apart by Wood Rogers right now, and as it's been put back together, it's in horrible state of repair. And, and the places that they have repaired, they've turned it into basically, uh, driving on a dirt road. So I wanted to know if there is some standards or, um, what the, what the requirement is for when they put a road back together, um, and then what the timeframe is at, if we can get some kind of clarification on that.
And this doesn't have anything to do with future agenda, but shout out to Angela Foose for giving us that email on the statistics on building permits that we requested. I like it.
And then, um, we haven't received any updates regarding any of the legislative stuff, or maybe we haven't, I just missed it, have we? Or the, or the lands bill or anything like that, okay, thank you.
Great, closing item number nine, we'll move to item number 10, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do we have any requests to speak forms, voicemails, Zoomers?
No, there are no requests for speak forms, or emails, or Zooms, or anything.
Great, thank you. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak in general public comment? Seeing none, we will close, item 10, number, uh, number 10, public comment, move to item number 11 for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you all.